Madeira Beach Board of Commissioners's regular meeting. Today is Tuesday, January 12th, and the time is 6:00 P.M. Commissioner Lister, will you please lead us in this evening's invocation?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we are so excited to start this new year with you. We ask you to continue to bless this city, this commission, and the citizens of Madeira Beach. That decisions made here will bless the citizens and continue to keep the city of Madeira Beach in good light. It's always in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would State Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Palladino?
Here.
Commissioner Schatz?
Here.
Commissioner Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Lister?
Here.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Here.
At this time, I will entertain a motion to vote to excuse Vice Mayor Elaine Poe's absence from December 22nd Board of Commissioners meeting.
I'll make the motion to excuse Vice Mayor Poe from December 22nd's VOC meeting.
I'll second it.
Have a motion as second, and Commissioner Poe, we're very sorry to hear about your family's loss, so. Madam State Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the provided minutes.
I so move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Have a motion as second. Is there any additions or corrections? Would State Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
All right. Mr. City Manager, would you like to go over the agenda? I believe we're going to remove ordinance number 2015-18 before I go ahead and ask for approval of the agenda.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think you can leave it on there, and when we come up to it, I'd like to just give a quick little dialogue so everybody's on the same page. But for those in the audience, if you're here for the Jim Holton development, or what's being affectionately called the Holiday Isles Development, this board cannot take action on anything tonight because the city manager's recommendation to the plan commission last night was to take no action, and they upheld my recommendation. So they'll be taking it up again. Basically, what they're doing is taking 30 days to ponder. I've already been in contact with the developer in regards to both sides bending and not breaking, hopefully finding some sort of compromise in regards to height and traffic. And if anyone was here last night, those were the two major issues. So with that, if you came for that and you want to get up and walk out, that's no problem. You're welcome to stay with us for the duration of the meeting. I believe it'll be a relatively short meeting. But, Mr. Mayor, when item 2015-18 comes up, I would ask for a 30-day referral to the meeting on February 9th.
Right, thank you, Mr. City Manager. At this time, I will entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
I so move, Mr. Mayor.
I second.
Have a motion as second. Is there any discussion from the staff?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just, I gave, you know, me and my public speaking, I probably bumbled through it, but just so everybody in this room is aware, the reason why it's on the agenda isn't because we want, we as staff, or the city attorney, or the city manager wants you to take action on it. It's because of a posting issue. We have to post all this 15 days in advance, so we have to be ready just in case the plan commission would make a recommendation. Since they didn't, you literally can't take action tonight, but if they would've, I have to be ready for you to be able to take action on it, refer it, put it to a workshop, or deny it. So just, you know, I was talking to a gentleman this, yesterday morning, just because it's on an agenda doesn't mean it's going to be taken up or action's going to be taken. And, you know, it's weird, because then why have it on an agenda? But that's the reason why there's posting requirements.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. All right. Madam State Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
All right, next presentations.
I don't know if anybody does want to get up and leave, there's no hard feelings. I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if you wanted to take 30 seconds and allow people to do that, otherwise, like I said, it's going to be a relatively short meeting. You're all welcome to stay. You're better than I am.
Actually, I believe it's worth staying here. Ms. Solis' update on business. Robin, how are you doing this evening?
Well, this is tall. First of all, best view for the pledge of allegiance I've had in quite some time, looking out these beautiful windows. Congratulations. I know I've been here several times since you've opened, but not for an official meeting. So, hi, I'm Robin Solis, and you know, thank you for having me. I'm the president CEO for your Tampa Bay Beaches Chamber of Commerce, and I'm making a quick presentation. I'm going to hand out some items to the commission really quick, and then I will address some items. I actually have a copy for you as well, Shane.
Thank you, Robin.
Thank you. Does everyone have a great holiday?
Yes.
Thank you.
New Year, clean slate?
Press on your presentation and the mic up at the podium, and I don't want to comment on your height, but the mic is designed to not have any background, so you literally have to get, you have to get pretty close to it for it to cover.
I feel like I'm on The Voice.
Yeah, we're still not getting any coverage. We're still working out some bugs on our technical parts of the room, so. That's true.
Okay. Unlike Shane, I have no problem speaking in public. And so, I'd like to give you kind of an end of the year or kickoff of the year update for the chamber.
What you have in front of you, oh, there we go.
There you go.
Check. How did I do, Farrell? So, what you have in front of you are a few items, one of which is our visitor's guide. It is the one that has the beach scene on the front. Shane, if you don't mind, hold on, I didn't keep a copy of myself. Yes, that one. That's our visitor's guide. We have put yellow sticky notes in that guide wherever Madeira Beach is mentioned in the guide. I did not sticky note if any of your businesses have advertised in that guide. You can peruse that and check it out yourself. We produce 45,000 copies of that guide. Those are distributed, first and foremost, throughout the state of Florida at the five official welcome centers. So as tourists are driving into the state of Florida, they all stop at these welcome centers. Yes, people actually stop and pick up a paper product to see where they want to go. And so we pay as a chamber to distribute that product throughout the state of Florida, through Visit Florida. We also distribute them in all the town halls that will accept them and pass them out, our welcome centers, and then we also snail mail those to any online requests we get through our website. The next book you have, same touch and feel, different cover, that is our official relocation and community guide, member directory. So we utilize that book. It's a 9,500-piece production. Anyone that goes to our website and requests relocation information, we form a submitted, we snail mail those. We're probably averaging about 150 mailouts a month right now, especially during the winter time, it gets a little bit higher. And again, the yellow sticky notes indicate where Madeira Beach is mentioned throughout that book. We distribute those, again, in any of the town halls. Our realtors that are members take them, and when they're driving people around that are interested in properties, they give that book to them as a resource. In the back, it's a member directory and a resource for any goods or services that you might need in the local beaches area. And then finally, the printout, the eight-and-a-half by 11 printout, is a snapshot of the page dedicated to the city of Madeira Beach on TampaBayBeaches.com, and any of our other five or six domains that we have, Gulf Beaches, Your Gulf Beaches, although we purchased a lot of domains, they redirect to TampaBayBeaches.com. I would say, when we do our Google Analytics, Madeira Beach ranges in the top five of, in the cities clicked, usually any month, bubbling, you know, three, four, or five most visited beach community on our website for information. So, Robin, what do you want me to do with this? Great, I love the name City of Madeira Beach, and it looks good in print. Look at it. If you have changes, I need those changes sent to me, so maybe one person can be dedicated here at the city to take all the changes you want. We'll resonate those to the online versions immediately, and then any print copy, those will resonate when we go back to print on those. And then I failed to mention, everyone receives Doug's e-blast, government news, very informative product. We get a lot of feedback from all the cities up and down, and again, he, I don't know if you know this, but he customizes that, so he has like four or five versions. And so your version is what you see, and then he has, you know, North Beach's version, South Beach's version. So anything you might see in there too that you might want mentioned or changed, I would reach out to Doug on that. Any questions or comments?
Actually, Robin, you know, a great thing, I get to work with you. Of course, I'm one of the three elected officials on the tourist development council of Pinellas County. And tourism is, folks, tourism is a very big part of the city of Madeira Beach, and what the Beach Chamber does here, besides working with business and our visitors, is outstanding, Robin. I mean, folks, you think about it, our mileage rate is 2.2 mils. We are the lowest mileage rate of any full-service city in Pinellas County. That's because of tourism. We park for free. Yes, our visitors have to pay for parking, but look around the county. No other city lets you, into the residence, park for free. Yes, there are discounts. I think St. Pete Beach is the closest one with $65 a year. I mean, it is very important. I had a chance to walk around, and I know that, and I was going to get with you, I just got the email from Doug, but we'll walk around and talk to the businesses. Coming off this past New Year's session, most of the businesses I talked to were up 18 percent. That's outstanding. There's two new business opener that I want to go ahead and introduce you. One's actually a new dive shop here on Madeira Way. So I'm excited about working with you on those two. And through the year, I think we've opened up, what, almost seven to 10 new businesses here in the city of Madeira Beach?
Definitely more than that. I had a tourism committee meeting here, actually, thank you again. We hosted it here at Rex Place up the street, and I ran down from Clearwater Beach to St. Pete Beach, all the new businesses, just in the last six to eight months that have opened, and I could email that report to y'all if you'd like to see it. And of course, we listed the ones that are here in your city as well, as any properties that have changed ownership or development, potential development, like in John's Pass or on the beach, Gulf Side, and all of that. Yes, business is great, tourism's vitally important to our economy, our economic development, the livelihood of the communities we live in. You know, 85 visitors create one job. You know, 45, I think, I wanted to resonate, we print 45,000 copies of that book. We don't ask for anything from our cities that we partner with. We do this because we want to partner with you, we want to showcase your city. We, your information, your input, is valuable to make sure it's accurate, it's concise, and it's what you want to portray your city to be when people are looking to come here and visit, and that's what we want to do for you. We're great partners. The county does a great job promoting the destination from a county perspective, but our job as a chamber of the beaches is to take that granular and say, this is what there is to do in Madeira Beach. Great sunsets, yes, we got John's Pass Village, we got the Wednesday Market, all these wonderful things that are going on. So keep it coming, keep the good work up, and let me know how I can be of further assistance to each and every one of you.
And Robin, thank you. Y'all do a great job promoting the city of Madeira Beach, so thank you very much.
Any questions?
Thank you for emailing, Mr. Mayor.
I definitely will do that.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, the one comment I'd like to make is, you know, when the, what was the Treasure Island Chamber of Commerce let us know that they were putting us on their letterhead, which was kind of a shock to us all, but we embraced it and we participate in it. I believe Robin and her organization do a very good job of, for lack of a better term, playing nice in the same sandbox with the other chamber, the Madeira Beach Treasure Island Chamber is a struggling chamber, it's got new leadership, and Robin, I think, has done a good job of kind of embracing that and just working well with both, so I, frankly, I appreciate it.
Pleasure.
And there's a lot of chambers out there. I mean, how many in Pinellas County? Just 18?
There are 14 chambers of commerce in the county, yes. And if I had my way, I would work on a consolidation effort. That's a whole nother time. I'd probably have to start 30 years ago.
Robin, y'all do a great job. I mean, even towards Pinellas Park, I mean, I know y'all get around the sides up and down the beaches, so outstanding job. And just real quick, and I'm going to probably, I'm not going to throw you under the bus, Mr. City Manager, but the importance of bed tax dollars and tourism to the city of Madeira Beach. I know that we've been able, through the last couple of years, to get more bed tax dollars rolling through here for our projects. You know, those beach walkovers out there, nature looking at, the new beach walkovers, that all came from bed tax dollars. That wasn't anything we had to take from general fund or from our taxing dollars. Also, if you look, and I know we're working on something with the county right now with bed tax dollars, and, Mr. City Manager, I don't mean to let the cat out of the bag too fast, but we're looking at doing things with our beach coins out there. That'll come from bed tax dollars, and I think that's going to be a number somewhere between $300,000 to $400,000. So the importance of tourism in the city of Madeira Beach is large, folks.
Yeah.
Things that we can do in our city to keep it moving.
I think unfortunately, in our county, there's a misunderstanding from a lot of residents and even some small businesses that the taxes from a bed tax, they feel like that is an imposed tax on residents, and that is absolutely a myth. You know, if you stay in a hotel, you pay that tax, and that is the only time you pay that tax, and when that tax is collected. And the more that we can be ambassadors in our community to relay that information to those individuals we speak to, the better that word and message can get out, and the more it's accepted on what we can do with those funds. So thanks again, I appreciate it, and call upon me if you need anything.
Robin, thank you very much.
You're doing a great job.
All right, next, Dais Log Review. Madam State Clerk, do you want to go over that? The log review, two items.
Do you want me to, Shane?
Already just noted, they're on the...
Well, I can handle that.
Okay.
Diaslog, let me take a look.
Usually see that, but I know she's in the box tonight.
Yeah, she's back doing her thing. Basically, there's your contract for the S8, as we had discussed at a previous workshop meeting, is on your desk, and then, under my report, I'm going to give you just a very short update on the undergrounding, which got delayed a little bit because of the holidays and some backorder of some equipment. Basically, we're finally underway. You've seen some of the sidewalks ripped up north of 150th and Gulf, and so that's basically it, that it's on your desk for your information, and as those updates come in, I'll provide those to you so that when your constituents call and say what's going on, you've got some answers.
Okay, thank you, Mr. City Manager. All right, next, public comment. Public comment is for items not on the agenda that pertains to city business, but anybody like to speak this evening? And public comment is limited to three minutes. Devin.
I'm Marilyn Halfling from 806 Bay Point Drive. I just have a few comments. First of all, I'm very pleased and in total agreement with the commission's recent evaluation of our city manager. I just hear positive comments from everybody I talked to in the city. They're very pleased, and they're happy that you're recognizing how good Shane is doing. He's very responsive to everybody, so we'll keep shoveling things for him to do and keep him busy, but I wanted to thank you for that positive evaluation. It reflects good on the city, too. Second, I just found out that both Commissioner Lister and Commissioner Hodges are not going to be opposed, so congratulate them on another term.
Thank you, ma'am.
I believe that's correct. Third, I'm trying to read my notes. I do want to thank you for the resident parking permits. I hear really, you know, I compared what other cities are doing, and it's so nice to have that permit, because I often have people who are handicapped, and they wouldn't go to the village, or they wouldn't go to many places if you couldn't, if we didn't have that permit. Well, I guess their parking, their handicap parking permit would do it, but, you know, some people don't have them, and they still have difficulty walking. And I really think that the parking permits encourage citizens to be in the village more, you know, and to make sure that our visitors go to our beaches, because we can take our visitors with all their stuff, you know, to our parking places, and they think that's really cool. And this is the season when most of us have visitors almost all the time, and the folks I had with me over New Years, they were in the village every day, you know, and they would eat, they would, you know, watch birds, you know, talk to the parrot, all kinds of stuff. They'd tell me things I didn't know about the village, and I walked my friends' pugs there a lot, so I know the village pretty well. And my final comment is something that I hope gets on the work schedule relatively soon, and that is for a sidewalk bicycle lane, or maybe a really wide sidewalk that could take pedestrians and bicycles on Bay Shore Drive. That is a very, very narrow street, and before you, before you do, you know, plumbing things with the street, or repaving, or whatever, please consider putting a sidewalk on one side or the other. We probably don't need it on both sides, but I've been hearing complaints about, even though the traffic is really slow on that particular street and has many stop signs, there really just is not a lot of room for all the dogs, and the people, and the bicycles. And I just, I think a sidewalk, of all the streets I know, other than Gulf Boulevard, I think Bay Shore really, really, really needs sidewalk. And, you know, maybe it can be put in with the street repaving somehow or another, because I know there's, you know, there's space for, that the city has a right to do that, and it's probably, but, you know, people have been very concerned that bicyclists, or pedestrians, or their pets, or whatever, are going to get harmed on that street. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak this evening? All right, closing public comment. Consent agenda none, contracts and agreements. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the facility...
Wait, 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 Mr. Mayor, there should be an item under your consent agenda?
I have nothing on the new one. Zero.
Let me see. Is there an amended one? See, did we remove under the, under the consent agenda, the mitigation reconstruction grants?
Yeah, it's been postponed.
Okay, all right. I've got it, I just have an old agenda in front of me, I'm sorry.
That's correct, there is nothing on the consent agenda.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you're one ahead of us. The city attorney and I didn't get an amended agenda, it's no big deal, but you are correct. Sorry for the mix-up.
All right, next, contracts and agreements. Approval of the facility use agreement between the city of Madeira Beach and S8 LLC related to award of RFP for gym training services. Can I entertain a motion for that?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the facility use agreement between the city of Madeira Beach and S8 LLC related to the gym training services.
A second, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion as second. Is there any comments from staff?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, not to elongate a meeting, and it's ironic, because I think Jim Black is in the audience tonight, and everybody knows Jim Black is Mr. City Hall, but he also has to sometimes take the heat for certain issues, and one of them is, you know, when we first, when we first, first, first began the city center, we thought about creating a fitness center for the citizens of Madeira Beach, but as the project became more sophisticated and more complex, certain portions of the building had to be shortened in order to get NCAA sanctioned softball diamonds. So one of the parts of the building that was expendable, if you will, was the fitness center, and we needed to have a fitness center. You need a fitness center if you have a fire department. Those gentlemen need to be in shape and constantly doing those types of things for their job. So what we ended up doing is having a fitness center, a relatively nice fitness center that's sophisticated in the amount of equipment, but certainly not big enough to open up to an entire city for public use. Also, you know, the equipment would be, not abused, but A, used significantly, and then B, sometimes used incorrectly, which can be hard on that, and also hard on the person that's using it. So you'd almost have to staff the fitness center as well. So knowing that, and having issues with liability, and so on and so forth, I kind of brainstormed, and, you know, we had workshop shop this before, and Finance Director Tanali and I are always looking for new revenue streams in lieu of adjusting taxes. So the way we thought about this was, well, what if we brought in a personal trainer, make that person hold the liability insurance, give employees and citizens of Madeira Beach a discount through him, and get a, create a revenue stream, basically. And so for the, that's just for the good of the people in the audience that can probably share that story, but basically, what happened was, we had dreamt of a fitness center that was large enough to handle the public of Madeira Beach, and we ended up with something much smaller, and because of that, this is about as good as we can do. So citizens and employees get a discount, they have to train with the trainer, they can buy a package, they can buy a day, they can buy whatever they'd like, and then the liability and the insurance end of it falls on him, which keeps the city clear from liability.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Is there any other comments from the commission? Is there any further comments? Would State Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Please don't take offense from this, but I'm going to vote no, because I missed your presentation, and I really don't have any information other than what's on the contract, so at this time, I'm going to vote no.
All right. Next unfinished business, we have none. New business ordinance 2015-18. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for a 30-day referral of ordinance 2015-18.
We need to be a motion to postpone to date certain, February 9th.
Oh, February 9th, okay.
And the purpose for doing that is twofold, to let the public know they're here today, and also to allow the city to hear this again without the necessity of having to re-advertise it for the additional expense, if we have it postponed to a date certain.
So it'd be February 9th?
Yes, sir.
To refer until February 9th?
Yes. No, just, and I'm sure the city attorney will agree with me, you will, it'll be on your agenda. If the plan commission does not take action the day before, we'll be in the exact same situation that we are tonight, just so everybody's aware.
Okay. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to refer till February 9th, ordinance 2015-18.
I'll make the motion to...
You might drive a new truck. All right, I have a motion as second. Is there any comments from staff, Mr. City Manager?
No, sir. At this time, I think it'd probably be inappropriate to discuss what happened at the plan commission meeting, other than it was two resounding themes. Staff is working with both the developer, their architect, their engineer, to see if the sentiment of the people opposed, if there is some room for compromise, and if there's not, then the plan commission will just have to deal with the issue as presented at their next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Is there any further comment? Would State Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
All right, next, Resolution 2016-01. Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, is the resolution, 2016-01, a resolution of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the fiscal year 2016 budget by increasing general fund expenditures in the amount of $6,300 for city manager's salary and benefits and providing for an effective date. I was reading Resolution 2016-01 by title only.
At this time, I'll, at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that Resolution 2016-1 be adopted.
I have a motion as second. Is there any comments from staff, Mr. City Manager?
No, Mr. Mayor, just again, a thank you to the citizens of Madeira Beach, the Board of Commissioners. It was a very humbling experience. I'm happy to stick it out here for the long haul, but again, all the credit goes to the smart people that I hired to surround myself with, and then, again, you guys have to make all the tough decisions, I just have to carry it out, so I got a pretty easy job, so you make it easy and fun, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Is there any further comment? State Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Mayor Poe?
Yes.
Oh, Vice Mayor Poe, sorry. Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
All right, next authorization of annual leave payout. This time I'll entertain a motion for authorization of annual leave payout to the city manager per employment contract in the amount of fifteen thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty-two cents.
I so moved, Mr. Mayor. A second.
I have a motion, and a second, is there any comments from staff, Mr. City Manager?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor, just, you know, we rarely have anyone in the audience, so it's, it's nice to be able to explain some of this stuff, but per my employment contract, and again, you know, we like to have a, I prefer a lean staff, highly skilled staff, and a highly compensated staff, my, my department heads and I sometimes have a hard time using our vacation, and when you do use vacation, sometimes we're swamped when we get back, and we just end up putting that much time in anyway. So, what this amount equals is the amount of vacation that I was unable to use throughout the year, and that's per the employment contract as we negotiated it, I think, two or three years ago.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Is there any further comments? Would the state clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
All right, next resolution two thousand sixteen dash zero two, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, is resolution twenty sixteen dash zero two, resolution of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the fiscal year two thousand sixteen budget by increasing general fund revenues and expenditures in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars for Madeira Beach Little League and providing for an effective date, that was a reading resolution twenty sixteen dash zero two by title only.
At this time I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass resolution two thousand sixteen dash oh two.
Second.
I have a motion, and a second, Mr. City Manager, is there any comments from staff?
The, the only comment I got, Mr. Andrews is in the audience tonight, along with Mr. Hatch from our rec department, and I believe we have a representative from the, the Little League as well. Basically, you know, if you would have asked me three or four years ago, would the Little League and Madeira Beach ever come to an agreement to, to merge and work together, I would, I would have said no, we had some relatively heated meetings, and I think both organizations are somewhat political, and Mr. Andrews and Mr. Hatch were able to work with the Little League, and I appreciate the Little League's willingness to kind of come together and become one. And so, instead of us versus them and vice versa, we're teaming up to really provide a, a quality product and a quality program, and if you've noticed from, you know, what we had done in the years past, the rec department has certainly become more sophisticated just as the rest of what the city is doing, and so, a, a, a big thank you to the Little League to, for working with us, and then also to Mr. Andrews and his staff, because I think it was perseverance, and then you always hear me say, slow and steady wins the race, and this was a slow and steady race, but I think at the end, both parties come out ahead on this, so congratulations to both sides, I think it'll be a, a quality program, and again, a big thank you to Doug and his staff.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Andrews is in the audience, if anybody has any questions, and then we do have a rep from the Little League as well.
And I just want to thank the, the Little League Department, the other night I was sitting there walking around, I seen a couple of the coaches out there working with kids, going over fundamental skills, you know, I, every time I get a chance to walk around here, I know we have the NCAA tournaments out here, but seeing the coaches and the fathers out there with helping everybody out, it's exciting, it makes, it shows that we're a community. So, thank you very much for your time and all your coaches' time.
Mr. Andrews, as long as we got you, why don't you and the, the rep from the Little League come on up and kind of just give us the, the third grade version of, of how, you don't, now, not hand to hand.
I, I got a quick question. I had a gentleman at church Sunday ask about his son in the, in the, in the league, and I wanted to know who to contact, does he have a, like the rec center, or do we contact Little League?
Yeah, now, it's all, all of the information's on our, the rec's website, which is madbeachfund.com, okay? And we're not allowed to call it Little League anymore, because it's now become, we've gotten away from the Little League, and they are now part of the Cal Ripken Babe Ruth League. But, the beauty of this is, it was Gulf Beach's Little League for fifty years. That was one of the things for the last eighteen months, it stuck in my craw, I mean, they play here in Madeira Beach, they should be a Madeira Beach team, so now, guys, we have our own teams that are going to run around with little Madeira Beach shirts on, and it's going to be awesome, so, and I appreciate, and Darren's here, and like I said, my, my first meeting when I got here eighteen months ago was with the Little League, and I will tell you, it was less than a pleasant experience, and, but, you know, these are, these are people that are passionate and they care, and I think that what they wanted was a quality product to be able to give to their kids and be able to teach them baseball, and I think, honestly, and softball, and I think now, we have got a position where we're going to handle the administration portion of this. We wanted the money to be able to have some seed money, be able to start this off, but we're getting all of the, the registration revenue and everything comes into the city, we're going to, you know, obviously rearrange the schedules so the Little League can, can play out here, and, I'm sorry, the Babe Ruth, the Madeira Beach Youth Softball and Baseball Association can play out here, and this is going to be great, and these guys can do what they're really skilled at doing, is teaching their kids how to play ball, and they don't have to worry about all the political nonsense that goes along with this, we'll take care of all that, so, I'm really happy, I mean, honestly, of all the things that we've done, we had Boy George out here, we had a NCAA tournament out here without any grass on the field, but this is really one of the coolest things that we've ever accomplished, so I, I'm thrilled, so, this is great.
The fields are looking really good, absolutely. You know, it was a dedicated field before for the Madeira Beach Little League, it was Little League back then. Now, is there going to be a specific field they're going to play on that I can pass that information on? Are they going to play on the farm field, or?
They're, they're going to, the first two fields are probably going to be designated more for them during the week, it's all going to really be based on schedule, because we have other tournaments that are coming in and out, and they're going to have away games, but I mean, during the week, you'll see them out there practicing, but most of them are going to be playing on the first two fields, they will be having some practices on the, on the, on the larger field near the rec center.
Definitely starts with the kids, I appreciate you guys getting together and hashing this out, because kids are our future, thanks so much.
And, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Doug, but I think, you know, when we were going through this, and there was a series of changes, and I think the Little League thought that they might get squeezed out, and that, that was, you know, I, I told Doug, I said, you know, the one thing you can't screw around with is Little League in this town, because it's, it's, it's a big deal, and so, he, I mean, it, it took, I don't want to say years, but it, it took some time to get to where we're at, and, and I, I appreciate it, and again, for the two sides to come together, like Doug said, two years ago, I, four years ago, I would have told you it would never happen, and then Doug came along, and I just made it his problem, and sure enough, here we are tonight, so it's, it's really come a long way, and I think you'll have something really to be proud of.
Mr. Andrews, thank you very much. Sort of anything you'd like to say?
Well, I, I'll just, will say one thing, I can tell you this, we, when we did make the switch over from Little League to Babe Ruth, there's been a huge amount of positive reaction, all the way from the state, state rep that covers Babe Ruth, they know about our fields, they know about Madeira Beach, and they are thrilled for hopefully upcoming tournaments, state tournaments, regional tournaments, those type of things, so, the, the partnership is what we're calling with, is been nothing but positive, so we're, we're extremely excited, that's for sure. Thank you.
And Marilyn, that goes on a good point you brought up about riding bikes and people walking, you know, the average age, or average age of our city now is forty-eight years old? What a compliment to our city, that means we've got young people moving here, raising families, being able to do parts of programs like that, so, that's outstanding, that's outstanding, as a community, we should be very proud. Thank you. All right, Madam State Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hodges? That's right. I wouldn't let you slip, Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Schatz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Poe?
Yes.
I'm not that far from the average age. Yeah, I'm not over the hill yet, they remember little things.
You just look at.
Wow, out of the box, my Madam Vice Clerk.
Well done.
Great.
That's, that's just because he's grumpy.
In this experience I had today, you would be too. All right, next, Finance Director discussion, discussion on the pending fire engine RFP responses.
Yeah, just have a real quick update, if you remember, before the Christmas break, I had an engine item to basically float the idea of potentially financing the upcoming fire engine purchase, the, the adopted budget assumed that we would be proceeding with the, with the cash funding of that apparatus. So, I just want to get you, give you an update of where we stand today, so, on the twenty-third, before, before my extended vacation, I released an RFP, we advertised it to a series of banks, and we actually got ten, ten different responses, and they were all highly, highly competitive. I'm not prepared to discuss any of the details tonight, but I at least wanted to let you know that there's definitely a short list of what I would call highly competitive proposals out there, and I mentioned, one of my goals would be that if we were to finance it, it would only be pledging the remaining local option sales tax funds, and it seems that we will be able to do that, so, my recommendation at this point is that we, we continue down the path of financing the fire engine, and of course, there's no need for you to approve anything tonight, but my plan would be to bring more information to you at the upcoming workshop, and then to finalize everything on the, I think it's the February ninth BOC meeting. So, basically, I'm just letting you know that we're in a very good position, and if that's the way we want to go, then we certainly have that opportunity available.
Thank you, Mr. Finance Director, does any commissioners have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I, I have a, just a comment, and I won't get too long-winded about this, but a, a city, when a, a city manager, his two most, I'm trying to think of the right word, trying is probably the best word, trying department heads, if we would have had it, is a police chief and a fire chief, and I say that only from a budgetary standpoint, because they always, they need the toys, cops need guns, they need cars, they need all, the, the biggest and best stuff, you know, fire departments need jet skis, they need boats, they need fire trucks, they need ladder trucks, so on and so forth, and I was not necessarily in favor of this ladder truck at face value, and I had to be convinced that we needed a ladder truck instead of just a normal fire truck, but the more that I learn about this, and the more that I think it will open up doors, I think it's definitely worth the small increase in price to do that, I don't want to get too specific, but I think it's going to open up doors for other contracts and, and help with introducing new revenue into Madeira Beach. Also, the day that we don't have a ladder truck, or we make the decision to have a ladder truck, ocean sands on the twelve floor, or whatever floor it'll be, we needed a ladder truck that night, and so, I think it's a good investment, I think it's the right decision to make, how we finance it is, at least from my position, irrelevant, it's relevant to Vince and his position, and how you guys want to go about it, but I think the decision to go with a ladder truck is the right one, if that carries any weight with the five of y'all.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and I know we have a lieutenant from the Madeira Beach Fire Department in the audience, and I'll tell you what, folks, I was actually down at the Johns Pass tonight, the hut was on fire. What was, Lieutenant, if you don't mind coming to the podium, and I'm not going to put you on too much on the spot, but you were the lieutenant in charge that evening, and what I wanted to know is, what the response time of our closest ladder truck, which I believe was Pinellas Sun Coast that evening?
How's everybody doing tonight? Basically, as Shane said, there's multiple reasons that we would pursue a ladder truck as opposed to a fire engine in this town, not smallest among them being the new building codes, everything, everything has to be built seven feet up, people are coming in, building two and three-story townhomes, you think ladder truck, you think, oh, a twelve-story building, it certainly has a purpose for ladder truck, we're not going to get to the twelfth floor, there's not a truck in the world that's going to get to the twelfth floor. What's happening with Madeira Beach is there's all these two and three-story townhouses that are already being built up, seven feet off ground, so we currently don't have a ladder on our fire engine, it's that a lot of times can't even get to the second floor balcony of some of these houses. The closest ladder trucks to us would be out of the city of Seminole, and then north of us would be near Seminole High School, truck twenty-eight out of Pinellas Sun Coast. The night of the Johns Pass fire, we weren't going to put that fire out without a ladder truck, it just, we didn't have the angle to get to the fire, and it just is what it is. So, like Shane said, with the small increase in price, which is obviously a big deal, but for the value that we will get out of that, and the, I'm trying to think of the right word, increase in productivity, I guess, would, it's certainly worth it. If anybody has any specific questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, I put you on the spot, I just.
No, I, I just wasn't.
Happened there that evening, so, I mean, you know exactly what's going on.
It was, it was definitely, without that ladder truck, the fire would have easily spread.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm glad you put the lieutenant on the spot, because I'm going to ask him to write down the points that he just made, because frankly, I have been getting some phone calls and criticism of this, and I think it's, it's, it's an educational issue, you, you think ladder truck, you think Madeira Beach is too small, we don't need a ladder truck, well, that's not necessarily true, not only, not only do we need it, but it will also open doors for future revenue streams as well, so it's, it's a multifaceted type of investment, and I think if, you know, we've, we as a board and we as a city have kind of changed how we do things, if we're going to do it, we're going to do it right, and I really, truly believe, and I, I was not a supporter of this out of the gate, I had to be convinced, and the fire department, the fire chief have done a good job of convincing me, and it's certainly my recommendation to go with this, how we finance it, obviously, is, you know, we'll, we'll see what Vince brings next month.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and Lieutenant, next up, was there that evening, the fire was on the backside of the building, you wouldn't have got, you wouldn't have got to it without coming over the top, and like I said, the average home now fits two stories as three stories with the FEMA rules put in place, so it's just, like I said, is there a lot of fires, no, but if there's a fire, you want to be able to put it out and not have waiting on an engine for at least eight to ten minutes to get here.
Correct, just like the old saying, it's better to have and not need than to need and not have.
Lieutenant, thank you very much, and thank you very much to your service of the City of Madeira Beach.
Thank you guys very much for all the support you give us, appreciate it.
Lieutenant, I wasn't being facetious either, if you could, actually email me some of those points, because I'd, I'd appreciate it.
All right, is there anything else left on staff for now, discussion, was there any questions from the commission? Okay, we'll move on to reports and correspondence, does any commissioners have any reports or correspondence? Well, I just like to report, and I believe, State Manager, I, I believe, hopefully everybody else received, received a letter from the University of Connecticut thanking the City of Madeira Beach for their hosting of the beach bash, and it was a very nice little short thank you letter, and looks like we have a lot of new friends from Connecticut now, and they look forward to coming back to the City of Madeira Beach, so that was very nice from the Huskies from Yukon. The second thing is, a big discussions with the county right now is, and it goes back, actually, back to EMS, and I am right now the president of the EMS Advisory Board for Pinellas County, fire, not fire transport, but the transports you see on the streets, the Sun Store transports, they are having little issues with hiring, right now, they are actually running at numbers, they're sitting, setting new numbers in calls, so what the county's starting to discuss is to start maybe using fire transports, there's twenty-five units throughout the county that start shortening the response time, so that's the big discussion that's going on at EMS right now. Is there any other reports from the commissioners? Okay. Mr. City Attorney?
I don't really have a report, just to let you know that we've been really, really, really busy in my office with these developments going on, so, just like Shane, so, I don't have anything else, though.
Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, I, I have to agree with the city attorney, I think when he signed on and said, I don't need a, an increase, he might not have known about some of these developments, these, these developments have a ton of work behind them before they even see the light of day, and as you can see, even this last one is still morphing into some sort of compromise, and so, we'll continue to work as hard as we can, we had two hundred and fifty people in this room last night, which was, A, it was nice to know that the, the community is that engaging, B, that we can accommodate two hundred and fifty people, and at the end of the night, I think everybody understood each other's point, Jim Everett runs a very orderly and well-run meeting, and, and if without order, it would have gotten chaotic, not, not nasty, but it would have just been a mess, so they're, they're, the, both sides had their chance to speak, and I, I think there's going to be some compromise, it, it's a big development, it's probably the biggest development, or one of the biggest developments in the history of Madeira Beach, and so, it's going to take some time, I say it again, slow and steady is going to win this race, there's no reason to push hard, we need to keep moving forward, but there's no reason to, to rush on a decision. Just a couple of things that I've got, and if Mr. Andrews is still in the room, don't, don't run out, undergrounding is underway, you'll see some of the sidewalks are ripped up, north of one hundred and fiftieth, some wires have already disappeared, and if you take a look at it, you, you might not see it or notice it, but take a look at it, it really does change the scape of what you're looking at, it really does make Madeira Beach that much more beautiful, I, I really think it's a good investment, and the people that we got working on it are, are good quality people. That being said, part of, not necessarily part of the undergrounding project, but part of the Gulf Boulevard resurfacing project was to get big palms put in the medians, and FDOT ruled that they were going to only allow us a very small palm, and every community north and south of here's got a much larger one, so, those islands are going to be a little bit bare for a while, because I'm currently working with FDOT, in fact, Mr. Mayor, you had introduced me several years ago to a, a contact, Mr. Bob Esposito, and he's like a liaison type guy, when I got a problem, he makes it his problem, and he's, he works really hard for Madeira Beach, he's definitely a friend of the program, so to speak, and so, our engineer on that project has submitted a new species of palm, I, you know, I'm a punk from Wisconsin, I didn't know there was anything other than a palm tree, but there's several species, obviously, and we're going to try to get a much bigger, more flamboyant palm instead of just a, a skinny one, so, the reason for it is vision, and, and I can understand the safety aspect of it, but if it, if, all of them to the north and the south, we should all match, and we still should be afforded the same ability. Mr. Mayor, you commented on the St. Petersburg Bowl, I recorded the bowl game, I don't, I have, I went to it, so I had to record it, we did get significant time, in fact, it was funny, there was a linebacker from Yukon, and they had him on being afraid to pick up from Yukon, and they had him on being afraid to pick up the alligator from the alligator attraction, and, and Madera Beach was flashed several times, and also during the game. So that's an investment. We spend some money on that, and it does take significant staff time, especially on part by Mr. Andrews and his staff and myself. So if that's something that we're no longer interested in, I need to hear from some board members. It's not a significant investment. You know, we keep it under my allowable allotment in terms of promotion. But from what I saw, the, the amount of money that we spent, I think we gained in nationwide exposure. Doug, if, if you're here, come on up to the podium, because the collegiate softball tournament is right around the corner. I'm going to put him on the spot and ask him to list off all the universities, but we remember, and Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, but next year it morphs into a two-weekend, twenty-eight team...
Next weekend, or I'm sorry, next year it's going to be two weekends, back-to-back, and it's going to be twelve teams each weekend.
Twelve, twelve different teams.
It'll be twenty-four teams. And the beauty of this is, it's going to be, you know, this year, most of these Division One schools set their calendars out two years in advance. So the schools we're going to start getting are going to be, you know, Michigan State and Florida State and the likes of that. Those are the ones that have committed to two thousand seventeen already. So, you know, basically, from the middle of February until the beginning of March, we're going to be going crazy, back-to-back weekends. We actually have another Division One tournament that's approached us for the weekend before that. So it could be three weekends in a row of girls' Division One tournaments out here. So if I can keep my staff that long, it'll, it'll be really nice that they stay. So yeah, it's going to be really exciting stuff. And like I said, the, the level and the quality of teams that are going to be here is amazing. I think the, the best thing about this past weekend, we had a tournament out here, and I think Mr. Hatch took some pictures, but fathers, I guess people are getting used to coming here now, because they're starting to get out of their cars, not only with their chairs to watch the game, but with fishing poles. And between games, they're going out here and they're catching snook, and the kids are out there with the poles. And I mean, there were fifteen, twenty people lined up with fishing poles in baseball uniforms catching, catching fish the other day. So it's amazing, and couldn't be happier. Couldn't be happier with how this is developing. So...
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, my, my comment on that is, it literally has kind of turned into the field of dreams. You know, if you build it, they will come. But you know, I, I look, think back to when Commissioner Shantz and Vice Mayor Poe were elected, and if you would have told me, Boy George would be playing on a stage in our backyard, and we'd be having Michigan State play, you know, Florida State in a collegiate softball game, we, we weren't, we weren't there. And we certainly are now. So again, just kudos to the, the rec staff and, and my entire team of department heads, because it's, it's certainly coming around.
In fact, you've done a great job working with the CVB, and like I said, I've had a chance, you know. I mean, I think we've brought twenty-four new events here into the city in the last year, and them being some of them. I mean, that's exciting. And I know that there's talk in the European, the president of the European softball league was here. So, you know, Madera Beach might be the road to Rio, through Rio, to Rio. So that's kind of exciting. We're getting world, world press now.
Absolutely.
So great job to you and your staff.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, it's funny, I just, I just got a text from a citizen that's watching us on TV at home, and he said, "Go for royal palms for a royal community." So that'll be my pitch to FDOT, and I have to talk to him tomorrow. That's pretty catchy. So to that gentleman, I appreciate your comment.
And Mr. City Manager, I had a, had a discussion with Bob Esposito at the mayor's council meeting last week, so they're on it, and so he's, he's, he's open. Like I said, you brought up the main point was, and I think what it is, is the islands that you look at, the Reddington Islands, they're a lot bigger.
Lot wider.
Islands. And that's, our islands are a little bit smaller, so I mean, it has proportion with the width.
That's what I've asked for, proportionately. I just want to have the same ability.
Exactly.
And if you see Mr. Esposito, he's, you know, he's on the go all the time, and I rarely get a chance to say thank you, but he's, I mean, when I have a problem at eight o'clock in the morning, by ten o'clock, he's got staff on it. So he is definitely a friend of Madera Beach, and I appreciate everything he does, because he kind of takes the work off of me, and I can move on.
And publicly, I'd like to thank him, him and his staff worked on additional signage for turning left on the Gulf Boulevard after One Hundred and Fiftieth, and that seems to have, if you've ever noticed, you don't know unless you live here locally, that you can turn left to head south on Gulf Boulevard coming to One Hundred and Fiftieth. So I had a discussion with Bob Esposito. They actually went out, if you notice now, there's a little more signage, a little bit further out, that both lanes do turn left to kind of open it up a little bit more and keep it from getting so congested. I know it's our little secret, hey, jump in the right lane, and I'm going to get you to the light quicker, but I...
Bob was key in Commissioner Shantz's request too, in getting the, the no-truck route through Madera Way. People don't understand, Madera Way is our road, but since it connects two state roads, FDOT has a lot to say about how that's governed, and so Bob helped us out with that too, and that's why it happened so fast. Madam Commissioner, I know you had been working on that for years, and...
I know.
I, you know, I, I get a lot of credit for the work that other people do, but Bob Esposito really made that happen. So Mayor, I'll, in fact, Cheryl's in the audience. Cheryl, if you'd make a note, I'm going to send him a little thank you card or something. I never get to say thank you, because he just nails it out and is taken care of, so.
Trust me, he comes, hangs, he hangs out a lot in Madera Beach, so.
Does he?
Oh, yeah.
Good, good. Well, if he's in the right place, I'll buy him a beer.
Yeah. Anything else, Mr. City Manager?
No, that, that's it. If there's any other questions, that's fine. Again, in regards to the development, you know, you guys are in a difficult spot. You guys are elected officials. You represent your constituency, but because of the quasi-judicial relationship here, you know, you're, you're caught in a tough spot, because you're, you're not really supposed to be engaging in this topic right now, because it's not yours. It's at the plan commission level. And so I, I know it's impossible to, you know, just say, "I'm sorry, I can't talk to you about it. Please," you know, if they, if, if, if you need to send them my way, send them the city attorney's way. I'm happy to talk to these people. I've had a lot of visitors today. Two gentlemen from Snug Harbor met with me before the meeting last night. I, I think we're still in the educational mode on this development, and that's going to take some time. That's why this isn't going to just fly through. And so that was, if you hear, before anything was said last night, I recommended that they not take action, and the developer's attorney was relatively upset. And I, I don't want to say that I don't care, but we're not going to approve an eighty-eight million dollar project on its first take. I'm sorry. And I think there is some compromise that needs to be done. And so if you, if you do hear that, oh, you know, Crawford ran the show last night by recommending something before anything ever happened, that's why I did that. And so I think it was appreciated, frankly, by both sides. I did speak to the developer himself, not the, yeah, the owner, the developer himself, and he understood. He was very understanding, and I think Mr. Holden's a good guy, and his staff and his group currently are working on addressing the issues that were discussed last night. And that's about as generic as I can, or I guess as, as specific as I can get. So it may or may not come your way in February, but we'll keep trucking away.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Madam City Clerk?
I was just going to say that I know that the city attorney and city manager's office have been busy with the development agreement, but the city clerk's office is really, really busy too. But please don't send the people my way, because I won't be able to help them. I'll just have to redirect them to the city attorney or the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, and, and that being said, and I said it last night, and Amy, you know, I, I do sometimes believe that strength is in numbers, but the, you know, there's one single email that's being cut and pasted and sent. I'm sure all of you have seen it. A lot of you have been copied on it. And, and I, I appreciate the passion, but at a certain point, the, the redundant emails don't do us any good, because Amy has to, you know, copy them all, forward them on. They become a public record. I read every single one of them. Right now, it's, it's to the point now where, you know, come to the meetings, get educated, ask your questions, but the, the emails, if I can appeal to anyone in the audience, anyone listening, and anyone that you've talked to, we understand the issues. I mean, it was, it was pretty blatant last night. Height and traffic, height and traffic and density. So we're addressing all three of those, and, and it'll get in front of the plan commission and possibly you next month.